Good evening and welcome to the October 13th Three Village Board of Education meeting. Having attained quorum, may I have a motion, please, to move into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? We move to executive.
Okay. Can't see. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 13th, 2021 Board of Education meeting. Please welcome Jennifer Cabrera, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Replacement page, Schedule A6. That's it. Student recognition?
Thank you, Ms. Wovlinka. It is my great pleasure to introduce our Director of Music, Mr. Anthony Palera, who will now do our favorite part of the business of honoring our students.
Good evening. Please join me in congratulating the following students who have been selected for this year's NISMA All-State Conference. Thousands of students auditioned at virtual solo and ensemble festivals throughout the state. This is a result not only of the students' incredible talent, hard work, and dedication, but a direct reflection on our music teachers' commitment and perseverance towards excellence. I'm going to call them by discipline, by music discipline. You can come right up front, starting with the chorus All-State nominees Dakota Binder, Jennifer Cabrera, Daphne Chergel, go right up in the front of the room, Cole Napolitano, and Jaclyn Winslow. Please join me in congratulating them. too, for those students. The orchestra All-State students, Gabrielle Choi. Come on in. Emma Fleming, Ivan Gee, Sahana Gupta, David Wang, Alexander Lin, right up to the front of the room, James. Catherine Ma, Sophia Mulligan, Victor Pricklic, Kate Sun, Jaclyn Wu, William Yao, Lillian Zi, and their teachers, Phil Gelfer and James Heint. Congratulations. And please join me in congratulating our band students, Owen Dong, Justin Durco, Samuel Gittleson, Erin Gorl, Stella Conis, Shay McCoy, Joseph Neza, Claire Yang, Dora Zao, and their teachers, Dan Hayes and Jason Chapman. Congratulations. Gittleson, Erin Gorl, Stella Conis, Shay McCoy, Joseph Neza, Claire Yang, Dora Zao, and their teachers, Dan Hayes and Jason Chapman. Congratulations. Ava has been selected as one of the winners in this year's NISMA Calls for Creatives Competition, and I've been emailing back and forth with the head of NISMA over the festival. His name is Brian Zeller Upstate, and this is one of the emails, and I quote, "Yes, Ava's one of the selected songwriters. In the process of confirming, I realized why I remember Ava's name. Her songs were outstanding. I really enjoyed listening to them and look forward to meeting her at the conference." She's invited to perform her original songs at the All-State Conference. Congratulations.
They are incredibly talented, and we also give a shout out to the parents and to our wonderful staff. If the parents at this point would like to leave, we certainly understand. You're certainly welcome to stay, but if you'd like to join your children, that's absolutely fine. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Next is reports. Riley Meckley will deliver the student representative.
Hello, everyone. There are many positive things to say about Ward Melville in the past few weeks. Pep rally involved lots of school spirit as all the varsity fall sports were announced and recognized. Every senior athlete and captain had their name read out loud, followed by cheers and clapping from other students. At the pep rally, a mysterious Elmo figure from Sesame Street was spotted wandering around. The next day, students were surprised to find it was Mr. Bernhard in the costume. He was all over Instagram. Lots of pictures were taken to remember the famous Senior Chick Day, as we like to call it. All the senior girls ordered the same white jersey that says the number 22 on the back of it for our graduating year. Many underclassmen proudly wore shirts made by seniors, saying, "A senior chick loves me." This day is always memorable because all the grades come together to show love and support for their senior friends. The jerseys and making of T-shirts is the oldest tradition at Ward Melville, and it is always one of the best days of each year. Homecoming had the biggest turnout in our school's history. According to Ward Melville Administration, they have never seen a crowd this big coming to support the Patriots. Prior to the game, there was a carnival where clubs from the high schools set up games and activities. I know Mrs. Pettisish and I worked together with other students to establish the district-wide theme this year, united in spirit, and it was very rewarding to see all the excitement from the elementary schools coming together at the carnival. The student section at the game was very enthusiastic. They were all excited to be cheering together, and the Patriots' win was followed by seniors storming the field. Our mascot, Mr. Patriot, has been very popular this year. Everyone loves to give him high fives and take pictures with him. He was at pep rally, homecoming, and has been seen at a few other games and during the school day. The first homecoming dance was a success. Outdoors, under the lights, juniors and seniors came together and danced from 8:00 to 10:00 after the homecoming game. A special thank you to the Ward Melville Administration for giving us this fun memory and allowing it to take place. Fall sports teams wrap up their regular seasons next week and the week after, and then they progress to playoffs, which I will speak about at the next meeting. On another note, musical auditions have been completed, and students were assigned parts for the production of Less Miss. Lastly, Key Club has been working hard as their new version of Trigger Treat Street comes closer. This year, it will be outdoors on October 29th, the Friday before Halloween. Kids from the community are encouraged to dress up and walk the perimeter of the high school, where clubs will have decorations set up and high schoolers will be handing out candy. Thank you.
Thank you, Riley. Okay, next, items for board action. B, acceptance of independent auditor's report and corrective action plan. Jeff Carlson.
Thank you. So the financial statements and audit report for the year ended June 30th, 2021 are completed, and what you have in your pocket is the draft of the financial statements. After acceptance by the board, then they'll become finalized. They're due to the Comptroller's Office and State Department on October 15th, so that's why we have it on for tonight, for board acceptance. We'll send it out tomorrow to the Comptroller and State Department. Upon now, after being accepted by the board, you'll get the bound copies in another week or so. At the next meeting, October 27th, our independent auditor will be here to make his report to the public, and he will also be at the Audit Committee earlier that same evening. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to take them now.
Thank you, Jeff. Can I please have a motion first?
Diana, can I have a quick question? Can I have a quick question? Regarding the clubs, I see some clubs have negative balance. Just try to understand how this balance works, since this will be open to public, I guess.
Yeah, well, so this past year, as we all know, was a very unusual year. So a lot of the clubs at all of our schools didn't have much of a chance to take in revenue. They operated as much as they could during the year, so they spent money, but didn't really take in money. So some things such as, for instance, the theater performances. A lot of the revenue, most of the revenue from theater performances come from ticket sales. Well, last year, we couldn't sell any tickets. So we still had all the costs involved, actually, and then some, because we wanted to stream the productions. So that's why a lot of the clubs have a negative balance now. Normally, you would not see that. This is just an unusual year.
Thank you.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. So my glasses were fogging up, and I skipped over number six. So we're going to go back. Items for board discussion. NISBA resolution. Take it away, Sue.
Thank you. So as we discussed at our last meeting, NISBA is proposing and recommending several resolutions. We're considering 1 through 17, and we will vote on them as a block, and I will take your vote as your delegate to their annual business meeting next week. So may I have a motion to approve NISBA proposed resolutions, number 1 through 17?
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Letter C, certification of results of the MS Clark Memorial Library Budget Vote, and this will be Inger Germano, District Clerk.
Okay, this is certification of the results of the Library Budget Vote on September 22nd. The budget passed, a total of 498 yes and 97 no.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion first?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Letter D, approval of district plan for school-based planning and shared decision-making. Kevin Scanlon, please.
Yes, under New York State regulations, we must approve our plan for school-based planning and shared decision-making every year at the school board meeting. This allows for individual schools to run their site-based management teams.
I have a question. So the parent, there's the PTA, there's the administrator, the teacher, okay. The parent part, how does that get out to the community that they're looking for parents for those specifics by site-based? Is that through the PTA? Is it something posted? If somebody's not in the PTA that would want to do something like that, or?
It's typically done through the PTA, and anyone that's new to the committee each year must be trained. So Dr. Dubraski and I get the honor of doing the trainings each year at the special session for parents and students and staff.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I please have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. E, curriculum writing projects 2021-2022 addition. Kevin Scanlon?
Yes, so due to the requirements that have come through the State Education Department for changes to the social studies curriculum for civics education, we've needed to make an amendment to one of our courses. So what you have in front of you is a proposal for that amendment. Remember, back in last year in May, you approved three curriculum writing projects for this year. This came after that, so it just has to be recently put up.
Can I please have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Letter F, affiliation agreement with Mercy College. Kevin?
Yes. Three Village, because of our reputation academically, has the ability to host a number of student teachers and student observers from a number of universities throughout the United States. Last year alone, we hosted 150 student teachers and observers from 26 colleges and universities in the United States. So this is an affiliation agreement with Mercy College for doing some programs with them.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Can I please have a motion? Okay. Any questions? Did you have, did you get the first and second? Any questions?
Could you just say, could you just say first or second into the microwave? Microwave. Microphone?
Turn it into the microwave, yeah.
I'm thinking about my kids making dinner. Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Amendment to affiliation. Letter G, agreement with Adelphi University. Kevin?
So along those same lines, we also have an agreement with Adelphi University, but the, this agreement has been longstanding. We have to make an amendment for this coming year.
Can I please have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Letter H, approval of agreement between the Three Village Central School District, the Three Village Teachers Association, and the employees' names in the attached confidential Schedule A. Gary Dubraski.
Yes, ma'am. So this is a resolution that's going to approve two and a half, what we're going to call COVID employees. As a result of us, as of last week, we had approximately 130 elementary students out as a result of needing to quarantine or waiting for test results, so we needed to hire the appropriate staff to work with the elementary students remotely.
So moved.
Sue, any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
I, personnel matters instructional, Gary?
Yes. Instructional personnel, we have a few. First, I'm sad to report the pending retirement of Joni Zeller. She has been a longstanding guidance counselor for us since 1983, and sadly, she has decided to retire, so we're in the process of starting an interview process. In addition, we have several instructional resignations. They are a result of those folks accepting permanent positions. We've hired four additional instructional substitutes. This section also has 43 district coaching positions, as well as 36 SAT and ACT proctoring positions.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Non-instructional, Gary?
Yes. Another retirement of a longstanding clerical of ours. Sadly, after 20 years, Lorraine Rosa will be retiring at the end of this school year. We have a few other resignations from food service and childcare, and the appointments on the B6 are approving some of those subs into those positions. We have seven additional SAC workers, and we have a couple of status changes. One, Kenneth Nichman, he's been promoted to Groundkeeper 1, and we have John Saddlefield, who was transferred from Head Custodian from Mount to Minnesota. It's just a lateral move.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Letter J, recommendations of committee on special education, subcommittee, and accommodation 504 Plan meetings of, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Good? Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Recommendations of committee on preschool special education meetings of, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Letter L, NISBA Annual Meeting Proposed Resolutions. Can I have a, can I have a motion, please?
You voted.
Oh, we did? What is it doing down there?
That was my thing.
Oh, you, okay. Got it. So no L. Okay. So next is informational items of interest. Does anybody have anything? Do you want me to go, you want to do first?
Yeah.
Okay. So Inger's going to, our district clerk is going to talk about Board Docs.
Okay, so hopefully, as of the next meeting on the 27th, we'll be converted over to Board Docs. Board Docs is a platform where all of our board meeting agendas and our policy, our minutes, our videos, everything, policies, everything will be on that new platform. So all the information will go straight from the agenda setting over to the live meeting, where you'll see the members vote live, and then it'll go over to the minutes. And also, the policies will be worked through, through NISBA, through that, through that platform. So the, we're setting up the training for the board members currently, so hopefully, within the next week, they'll be training, and then we can go live on the 27th, if not the November meeting, depending on how it goes. And then the policies, we scheduled in the past with the policy meetings, we always scheduled it as the policies came up for review. This year, we decided to do something different, where we set policy dates throughout the year. So, and every policy that hasn't been reviewed or adopted within the last five years will be set on the schedule to be reviewed by the policy committee going forward. So, and I think that's really it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for Inger? Good? Jeff Carlson, Suffolk County Shared Services Grant from New York State, 31.
Yes. A few, a couple of years ago, Suffolk County contracted with a company to put out an emergency notification system. It was known as the Rave App, and Jack Blaum actually was a, we were the first district that got it up and running, thanks to Jack, and it's really a fantastic platform for emergency notifications. It was fully paid for by Suffolk County for all school districts in Suffolk. As part of the Suffolk County's Shared Services Program, they applied for a grant through the, from the state for it, and we're actually going to now reap even more rewards from that. We get $31,000. The cost was $62,000. That Suffolk County paid for that. As a result of the shared services, the state is going to award us half of that money again, $31,000, and half back to Suffolk County. So it works, we get the app for free, and then we're going to get another $31,000. So, and that was all Jack's doing, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blaum. Good job. Okay. Kevin Finity, our athletic director, was honored with the Ward Melville School of Distinction Award from the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. This honor was earned as a result of Ward Melville having 100% of our varsity teams qualifying to receive the Scholar-Athlete Team Status during their respective athletic seasons last year. For a team to earn Scholar-Athlete, Athlete Status, 75% of the team must have a GPA of 90% or greater. Only 67 schools in the entire New York State and 13 in Suffolk County earned this award. Great job to our student athletes, Kevin Finity, and of course, the coaches. One more thing I have is just to announce that the Human Resources Facebook page is up on Facebook and alive, so there's lots of open positions, and tell your friends and apply, I guess. Okay. Does anybody else have anything? Why are you laughing at me? Okay. This is good. Oh, it's got to be complete. Okay. All right. Okay, so we have just concluded the business portion of our meeting. Thank you very much. So before we begin the public participation component of our meeting, and prior to starting the clock, the board would like to offer some remarks. For starters, please note that the blue public participation forms may be submitted to the District Clerk, Mrs. Germano, throughout the meeting and will be processed as per longstanding policy, first with the priority to agenda items and then in the order received. So it's a first-come, first-served kind of thing. Please do not hand them to anyone other than the clerk, or you won't be called to speak. Next, we want to clarify a few things from the last meeting. Most importantly, we want to make certain, you know, that the lines of communication are open and are indeed two-way, if not necessarily in this venue. You have the right to respectfully share your opinions, critiques, and suggestions on any topic that pertains to our school district, and we welcome that feedback. As we will, as will be explained in a moment, our longstanding policy has been to preclude any discussion by the public during the public comment period of any student or staff member. That is to protect the privacy of our students and staff. Separate from that, we amended our policy on August 11th to extend that exclusion of allowable subjects of discussion to members of the Board of Education. Upon further evaluation, we will be considering a resolution which removes that amendment at the next policy meeting to be held on November 10th. Additionally, the resolution, we will be considering removing the superintendent of schools as well. As an aside, though, please remember that with only rare exceptions, we are not going to reply to any comments offered during the board meeting. That is in no way meant to be dismissive. Established best practice is for a Board of Education and/or superintendent to make note of your remarks and then do the necessary research and follow up after the meeting. If this pertains to you, you should, you should expect to hear back from the appropriate person in a timely manner. Now, back to the issue. Now back to the issue of speaking about staff. The logical question has arisen, if you can't talk about staff here, where and how can you? A tab is being created on each school website, which will help you navigate how and to whom you can best share your thoughts. It will be labeled Personnel and Functional by the end of this week. In addition to this, anyone can send an email to the superintendent and/or the Board of Education. Each one will be read and responded to. Please note, if your correspondence is addressed to the superintendent, she will be the one to respond to you. If your correspondence is addressed to the board, the district clerk will direct it to the appropriate person for response. Next, there's been some confusion about moving the placement of the public comment period. During recent board leadership training by the New York State School Boards Association, it was recommended that it's been, that it's often beneficial to the public to observe all of the board's business, know how votes are called, and hear all presentations before the public comment period. This is because many questions may be answered in those agenda items for you. In addition, having the comment period later allows for follow-up questions or requests for clarification. Our public comment session begins with 30 minutes, but we do have the option to add two additional segments of 15 minutes each. To be clear, this recent consolidation has not precluded any Three Village community member from speaking. We have allowed each one who signed up the time and opportunity to speak. It will always be our intention to do that within the parameters of the policy. Another matter of concern was the absence of an overflow room at the last meeting. Our superintendent will provide that explanation.
Thank you, Ms. Vlachova. It's important to understand that the lack of an overflow room at the September 22nd meeting was not as a result to preclude members of our community access to our district facilities or in-person participation with the Board of Education. At the August board meeting, there were frequent disruptions in the overflow room, which resulted in the board having to intermittently stop agenda business to address the issues. In an effort to prevent future disruptions and the fact that a decision was made to continue to livestream the board meetings, an overflow room was not offered. In fairness to the board and to the administration, we were not made aware that former students, as well as other residents, were outside in the parking area until the information was reported during public participation. When that information was reported, the individuals who were in the boardroom and had already spoken kindly gave their seats to those outside. As you know, we have COVID protocol rules. As you can see, the seats are clearly separated here. From this point forward, we just want everyone to know there will be an overflow room will be available to our community residents, and board meetings will continue to be livestreamed.
Thank you very much. I'd now like to introduce Chris Misteki of Gersio &amp; Gersio, the district's legal counsel. After attending New York State School Board Association Leadership Training, it was learned best practice in many school districts to include the district legal counsel in public session. Mr. Misteki will be joining us for our meetings going forward, so that, as question in his purview arise, he might be able to give us some immediate response and guidance. For starters, Mr. Misteki will explain in a bit more detail the policy issues I mentioned earlier, and after that, we will begin with your comments. Mr. Misteki?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to present to the public tonight. The board has received requests for information from members of the community as to their changes in policy with regard to public participation. That's policy 1230. Those changes were made by the board at the August 2021 board meeting. Specifically, the public members have inquired as to whether the board recently implemented changes in policy to prohibit the public from discussing individual district personnel. In short, the board has not made changes to the policy regarding discussing individual district personnel. The board's policy has historically prohibited such discussion. The board's last amendment to this policy prior to August 2021 occurred in March of 2018. We have also reviewed revisions to the policy going back as far as 2008. Since at least 2008, the board's public participation policy has consistently prohibited public discussion involving individual district personnel and students. The August 2021 policy change did, however, add a prohibition against discussing individual board members during public participation, and further changes to the policy addressed the ability of the board president to address yelling and disruptive behavior in public and the movement of the public comment period. The board's policy has been reviewed by legal counsel and is legally sufficient as written. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you in public, not just an executive, going forward. So now we're ready for public participation, and I have a statement that I read before each time, each board meeting at this point in time. The board will now allow for public participation. Public participation is encouraged and will be permitted for district residents for up to 30 minutes. It is the collective expectation of the Board of Education and district administration that appropriate decorum will be respected and followed at all times. Under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments, questions, or discussion of individual district personnel or students. Inappropriate language, shouting, and behavior that is disruptive and disrespectful will not be tolerated. Any individual demonstrating disruptive and disrespectful behavior will be ruled out of order and asked to leave, or will be removed from any board meeting. The 30-minute public participation period begins now. You do have three minutes, and there is a timer, and our district clerk is in control of that. So without further ado, our first speaker, Susan Walhart. Good evening, Susan.
My name is Sue Wallert. I am a resident of Satacet. Good evening, members of the board and Mrs. Pedicich. Tonight, I am here to speak my truth. While you and the public will interpret what I say in your own way, I am here to invite thought and encourage conversations. Dr. Terrence Roberts was hired as a consultant to the Three Village Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, of which there are 54 members as listed on the district website. I am not part of this committee currently. His personal experiences as one of the Little Rock Nine allows him to share profound insights into the civil rights movement of the 50s and 60s. While listening to the April 2021 meeting with the Elementary DEI Task Committee, I took notes, gathered my impressions, and will share one major thought with you this evening, and I quote Dr. Roberts, "Conversation is an exercise in diversity." After witnessing last month's board meeting, I saw the continued decrease imposed by the board in not allowing people to show diverse views by, one, closing the overflow room, which held people who have meaningful opinions; two, the board reawakened an existing rule, which appeared to be put into action at a time when the overwhelming majority of speakers were unable to clearly speak their truth. It was heartbreaking to watch. As speakers waited out in the parking lot, the board's rationale for discontinuing the overflow was based upon current news reports of out-of-control board meetings. At that moment, we became victim of other people's behaviors, sort of like when a child does something wrong and the whole class is punished for one person's misdeed. How do we, as adults, set the example of being inclusive and show that Three Village can be diverse in thought for the benefit of our children? Shutting voices down does not bode well for the board's said hope for sincerely wanting to hear what people have to say. Yes, people are angry, and people will not agree with all you do, but, as Dr. Roberts expressed, we need to learn to have these difficult conversations to enable us to understand each other's points of view. I encourage the board to re-watch previous meetings to examine how certain board members receive people's comments. Ask yourselves the question, would you feel like you're being heard if you were in the speaker's shoes? We are diverse in our thoughts, and that is what our country is based upon. Now that the overflow room is reopened, my hope is people will use it efficiently and responsively, responsibly, sorry. Conversation is an exercise in diversity. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan Walhart. Wallert, I'm sorry. Next up, Jim Salvario.
Our First Amendment right to free speech is becoming increasingly under attack. More and more people are beginning to feel like they're living in George Orwell's 1984. Words with precise meaning are linked with other words that make meaning less clear. A case in point is social justice. Meron Webster defines justice as a process of or result of using laws to fairly judge and punish crimes and criminals. Definitions of social justice are much less precise, and while they include terms like virtue, fair, compassionate, personal responsibility, and none of the definitions that I see the word law, which brings to mind a troubling question. How can someone link words "social injustice" when there aren't any references to statutes or time-honored protocols as to how someone is found guilty or innocent of violating the rights of others? Who is the final decider of right and wrong, if not a jury or your peers? Enter cancel culture, where someone taking offense to a remark can go on social media and literally ruin another person's life. The offended party has only to think they've suffered from someone's words. They may make their argument based on perceived microaggressions. There's no trial, judge, or jury, which brings us to George Orwell and the Three Village Anti-Racism, Racism, and Social Justice Task Force, the definitions page. Social justice is divided into four main principles, human rights, participation, access, and equity. There's no specific definition of social justice. Oddly enough, further down the same page, microaggressions are clearly defined as the everyday verbal, nonverbal, and environmental slights, snubs, or insults, whether intentional or unintentional, which communicate a negative, which communicate negative messages to persons based solely on group membership. Back to Orwell. Winston, the main character, explains, whether he went on with his diary or whether he did not go on with it, made no difference. The thought police would get him just the same. He had committed the essential crime that contained all the others in itself, thought crime, they called it. Even a facial expression would serve as proof. It was terribly dangerous to let your thoughts wander when you were in a public space or within range of a telescreen. Think today's iPhone and internet. A nervous tic, an unconscious look, of anxiety, a habit of muttering to yourself, anything that carried with it the suggestion of abnormality or having something to hide. The worst of these was known as a thought crime, and it's pretty much what it sounds like, a thought crime. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so the next Board of Education meeting will be October 27th. The next Policy Committee meeting will be November 10th at 6:00 p.m. right here at North Country. Can I have an adjournment? Motion? Okay, good evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much.